During the work session tonight, the board will hear about the current work being done to ensure that our students are actively participating in optimal learning opportunities, including sharing their voice with the school board and the greater community. The district has adopted an equity stance as a means to target areas for action, intervention, and investment. In particular, we believe everybody has the ability and right to learn. We have an ethical, professional, and legal responsibility to ensure an education system that provides active participation and optimal learning to prepare students for their desired individual futures and to create a thriving community. So tonight, we have been introduced Superintendent Vanderpaart, Larry Williams, and Nissail Flores Gutierrez, directors of the Equity, Inclusion, and Instruction. Cam, ask the preview to leave this board meeting.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the front table and make a bit of an announcement. But you're sitting at the front of a PhD doctor, Dr. Nissail Flores Gutierrez. Congratulations. And what I'd like for you both to do is walk us through your thinking. So when we met, we weren't exactly sure what the board would want students to do in a board meeting. And we had ideas that were probably important, so we wanted to match up what we felt and get your feedback from you to them, so that we knew if we're picking board reps, what we would expect from them and they could expect from us. So I don't know who's starting because I didn't ask that.
On Nissail's.
Quick question. If you all had a document that you shared, please, if you did that document.
You did it in a packet?
It may or may not be there.
I'll go find it.
But I have several copies.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Thank you. In front of you, we have a draft, just a working document of our thinking. Whether or not we're actually bringing up ways in which we could get them what it proves maybe to the boys. And so in front of you, you have a draft page with a paragraph, a table with two sections to it. One of them is titled Propose Idea One, which is status quo. And the other one is Propose Idea Two, which is affinity groups. And I can walk you through that. And at the top, I put, we used the Equity Lens to create this document. And so everyone has a goal, or the questions that are out on the Equity Lens tool, the Honey Kelly one. And so the first thing we put on there was the purpose. And really, to flesh out what is the purpose of student voice. And related to that, the outcomes, what we hope to gain from this student's voice. And will this need to change? So really, this conversation, questions for you. And I also included the inclusion piece, because how are we potentially getting all those perspectives? To make the evaluation and feedback, how do we know that the power call should be cool? And so I put it up there because I think it's important for us to think about student voice and at the same time, using the other groups. So the first proposed idea is status quo. It really matters. I've only known in the past that students, board reps from each high school come either zoom in or in person, and they speak at the board meeting, just like before. And you remain or may not in the front, which is showing, kind of give up. A brief summary of what's happening after school. I put a board there. We could provide a board-created prompt. For example, if you wanted them to speak specifically to something, they might change their run rate more, it just stayed the same way. Now it's keeping things relatively status quo. The other idea is to perhaps invite affinity groups, students during the executive sessions to provide that student voice. And here's our discipline. And so the representative from each student affinity group presents to the school board during the executive session using a board-created prompt. So if that's a prompt, you all agree. Each affinity group gets roughly two minutes, and that's arbitrary, that could change. You could decide how many minutes you want to use. But for the sake of this example, it's two minutes to speak, 10, 12 minutes for all groups. And then the board responds. So there's a dialogue, there's a conversation. The affinity advisor for each affinity group also made attempt to respond. And the advisor is a paper guy. And we can also put a lot of clarification through, let the students do to get here. The process will look as such. Student affinity coordinators, which we have in the district, we work with school-based advisors who prepare students' responses from students. Then a student is chosen to speak for the group, so this could change monthly. So we would have a BSU representative, a LSU representative come. They personally will go to the board's room. And then we would maybe, it was response, I had a time, so you. Some things to consider, students zoom in versus in person. So this might be an access. Executive session versus regular session. And I put that down because we feel that there could be a better dialogue or communication during the executive session versus the regulars. I just want to provide more time for you all to have meaningful conversations with the kids. And then we'll also provide feedback. Time consideration as well, this is the time for adults and for students. So thinking about what time you would need during the executive session. And that's not necessarily going to have to change it, but it's just something to consider. It's something we thought about when looking at the Honey Kelly tool. And then not on here is translation, but we can also provide that as well. So really, that's another idea, an idea about student voice. But really, it comes back to the purpose. What is it that you really want to achieve for students' voice? And what outcomes do you want? That will absolutely drive the structure of it. So we're more than happy to answer and clarify the questions that you have. But this is really another proposed idea that you could get out using. Yeah?
Could I get a, or could we get a copy of the Equity Lens and the work you did with it? Love to see that come with things like this, because I can see it.
I don't have a copy of Primy, but yeah, we can get you a copy of Equity Lens. All the bolded words are from the word from the Equity Lens, this is the process. So the first step is the purpose, where I put that down. Outcomes, included, evaluation, feedback, those are on the two-page handbook.
Right, I heard you say that. And I'd just like to see if you know how to have it.
According to the.
Setting the Equity Lens out with all the things that we do. That way, we know it's implied, kind of like, could I just?
Cam, in.
Thank you. It's like math, we need to. No, I'm testing though. We want to see the work. I want the whole district to get on board.
The other piece is that the Equity Tool will be used by the board in the process of making a decision how students need to be participating in the process. So some of it is what we thought of as we were looking at how students could participate, but ultimately, it would be using the tool to make a decision on how would you prefer it. And will help support getting the students. So being clear that it probably would be by region, likely. Then we would have students from the high school, in all five affinity areas come. One representative would come and speak. Later, another region come and speak. So that way, eventually throughout the year, you have a chance to speak with students.
So just to clarify, are you asking the board to, the questions like what outcomes we hope to gain from having students here?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
This document is for you, we created so you can walk through the Equity Lens process and think about student voice. So that's why we put the question on there. It wasn't necessarily for us to do the work. It was, here's an idea, we all think, and use that tool to make that final decision.
I just want to clarify one other thing. This is great. I think on the things to consider, that we're talking a work session versus a regular session, not new executive session. Yeah, where we could have a dialogue more, like, we're happy with you, this being a work session as opposed to, yeah, private. Yeah.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, Mary.
I think I turn my on after Mary.
Why don't you go, Mary, and then go.
No, I appreciate this work, it's great work. I'm glad, thank you. Probably a different tweet. No, I think it's great work, and I appreciate the thought you put into it. And I know, answering the first question, the purpose of student voice for me is to really hear what's going on in their schools, and to really get their impression on the issues that are facing the board. I can think of several examples, like 10 here. We've asked the students to participate in a discussion on how they don't get a vote, but you know, their perspective of voting would be helpful to me. And then it's just, pretty simple, they have a relationship with the students, really, you know, what are your goals, what are your aspirations? And then you get to follow them through their career. And in fact, one of my students, one of my students who plays for Churchill, is in her last year of med school at Stanford. So I have to think that I'm part of that success, not really. But, you know, it just really shows that we create equality of students and equality of staff support instruction we have in the board there, and we're proud of that. And I did have a question about the executive session, because I don't know if it's just a misunderstanding of the term, but I don't know legally how you define the executive session. That's what I was about, when I understand that the need to have that kind of intimate conversation. And I would worry about that, if you try to put that in an executive session. But it's also tricky in work sessions. So the, you know, some of the boundaries or some of the prompts you suggested, we get to that need of conversation without saying something that shouldn't be said in politics.
Yeah, and it should be a work session.
It should be a work session, so.
Yeah.
Or side of the way.
Okay. Thank you. Maya.
I'm really excited about this. I think it's really, I love the innovative approach to the second one. I'm wondering if you might want to consider vote, so that there's still that traditional representative. And then maybe for next year, do a little digging into how those representatives are chosen. Because I think there's some pretty valuable leadership experience that students have with actually sitting up here versus sitting up there. I also think that it'd be great, at some point, to talk about how we're even structuring our meetings, because they can be very intimidating. I personally, just to give feedback while it's in my head, I think that having them come to regular sessions and making space in our meetings for that interaction to happen and be normalized would be really invaluable in the sense that the whole community can hear from students. I feel like they're the voice that I want personally to hear from the most, because they're the most impacted, and it's the voice that we have the least amount of access to, it feels like. So just to throw that out there, so that I don't forget in our future conversations. But on that note, I also want to give space for the students to consider that, because I know that things like homework and people work after school, the work schedules and the like, I don't know if the work session would be more appealing because of the time slot. But if that's not an obstacle, I vote for the more accessible meeting. Or not vote, but I support the more accessible meeting.
You need, you absolutely need vote. You're correct. And this is really just a jumping, a jumping start.
And I just wanted to note that I hope for next year, we do dig into how those, you know, board members that sit up here or sit alongside us are chosen. Because I think we could, just as you planned some very innovative or very innovative work on the affinity group representation, I think we could toss this around a little and get something exciting and effective.
Yeah, one of the key points, things to consider about communication, feedback, which is important, it's highly important, the Equity Tool. So providing space for students to get that feedback. Also, the school needs to be back to the students.
Martina has her hand up. Go ahead, Martina.
Hi, thank you. I'm so sorry that I can't be there in person. I'm so excited that we're getting to talk about this and really pleased at what you all are bringing forward to us. I'm a little curious to hear about how or whether students participated in presenting these ideas or coming up with these two options, and whether or not we've talked to any students, whether they be, you know, prior board reps or just students who might be interested, about what would feel like meaningful participation for them.
So some of this comes from feedback from the affinity group coordinators and their students having the desire to really meet or have a chance to talk with folks here at the district office, which I think kind of led us to believe that it would be a perfect scenario for them to interact with the board. Way we have it set up is they rotate each student, so the same students wouldn't come all the time, so you have a diverse group. I think one of the major pieces is the prompt, the board thinking about what would they like to hear, and giving students time to be able to talk in their affinity groups and kind of build their thinking around it, so that one student doesn't come and just represent their thinking, but they kind of represent the groups.
Laurel, did you have your hand up?
Thank you.
I did. How is Georgia defining affinity groups? Is this pretty narrowly defined, or is this pretty widely defined?
Fairly narrow. You know, there were the four federal groups that were identified. We've included the GSA, so we have a BSU, an LSU, a NASU, and an APASU. And then we also include the GSA.
I'm sure you know all the abbreviations.
Okay, so basically Black Student Union, Latino Student Union, Asian Pacific Almater Student Union, Native American Student Union, and GSA, A straight lines.
I love the idea of this. One concern I have is that Georgia traditionally has tended to focus their attention on the kids that are going to college and moving in that direction. Do we have a way of, do we have any kind of group that works with our CET? Are kids that are working towards different goals? I'm just wondering, to open the door just a tiny bit more, just to allow the voices that are not necessarily going in the direction everybody traditionally has it wanted and expected.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Again, this is just a starting point, that you all decide to expand it.
I don't know. But affinity groups, I think by nature are diverse. What they have in common is typically a cultural likeness, basically a definite likeness, and that's what brings them together. Students are pretty diverse even within that group, their experiences of school, likes, dislikes about school. So it's one of the powerful things about affinity groups, because they learn from each other. You have your, say, you have an African-American student that's an athlete, and you have an African-American student that doesn't do sports at all. So they don't have a whole lot in common, but they do have this experience of being an African-American, in particular, your school campus. That's oftentimes what students get together and come around.
Yeah, but in the opinion of your board, you're going to find students that are participating in CET pathways.
I'm trying to.
That if the groups are, as Lauren mentioned, are pretty diverse in that you will find students that are part of the CET pathway.
Okay.
So we're be able to speak to that.
And we'll be able to ask that we get a range of viewpoints, and we'll take a point and talk.
I think Alicia and myself.
So thanks for bringing this forward. I'm looking at, you know, the very first question that we and board need to answer. I'm pretty human, I don't have anything on this, but what is the purpose, student voice? And it's interesting over my time here, how it's changed. It was a seat at the table, it looked good on your resume. And you reported that we really attempted to, and this is just, I think, the next level of attempted to clear that up, I think, student voice. So I appreciate both proposals. I really appreciate the affinity group. I'm wondering, Judy, how we make this decision and when? Because we're a temporary, it'd be nice to kind of missing that, student voice up here. And I know there's all the, where are they going to sit? You know, those logistics, they're so many times. But if we, so this is our chance as a board to use our Equity Tool and their process through. So I'm wondering how and when I can do that today, or are they timing? Anyway, just kind of wanting to get it moving.
Okay, so I'm going to ask my questions. I think that we're having a work session on it. I think we'll be putting this on the agenda to make a decision about what to do at maybe our next meeting. Okay, first of all, this is really good to be thinking about other ways to do things. So I think if I'm understanding correctly, we have the more traditional from every high school reps being identified, and this would be in addition to that. So we're getting an expanded group. And I think my question is, are the affinity groups on the district level new? Or have they been operating for a while? Because I just wonder how robust the membership is. I know that individual high schools, for example, have BSUs, and how does that feed into the district affinity group? So that's one question. And then related to that is, I don't know how to do this, but kids with disabilities don't have a voice in this either. And I know it's not one voice, but there are certainly issues, you know, things. And I don't know exactly how to structure that, but it's something I'd like to think about. Because that, when I think about a group that's possibly left out, it could be that. So anyhow, the question about the affinity groups and are they new? How, you know, what's the membership like, etc.?
Yeah, the affinity groups aren't new. I think a lot of life has been brought to them, because we started to look at supporting the teachers that have spent years here doing this work. So this year, we also invested in having five people hired to oversee affinity groups and their, sort of to build them up and make sure that what's happening over here, that's good at one high school can be related to the other. So they're kind of being, sort of, moving around. You know, you take North, I think their first BSU had like 60 students. Not all African-American students, but a lot is included. They had like 60 students come. The LSU was comparable to the same size of their. So I think around the district, groups, some are very large, some are small and mighty. So, but they have been around since I was just.
So then, if I'm understanding you correctly, that they're not a district-wide? So each high school has one, and these, the people that we hired, the affinity coordinators would go to different high schools and work with the groups that were there?
Yeah, so each high school has an advisor that runs each group. So that's a teacher generally on staff, or volunteer, or classified person on staff that runs the group in-house. Our affinity coordinators are not district. They go between schools, say, we want to get speaker. And so our coordinators would spend time at the first meeting group. They can contact the folks to find someone to speak to that group. So that's kind of their purpose, is to make sure the groups are functioning, they got everything they need. The teachers stay pretty busy here today, and can't necessarily do all that footwork, but they're doing a great job volunteering and supporting the groups and students throughout. So.
Oh, I cut your light always off.
No, well, maybe. I think that we've done it differently across the districts. So we hired Leon, we hired Johnny. At North, we have a classified person that has a lot of hours attached to it. So I think what we're trying to do when we decided on the affinity group leaders is to make sure that every school had opportunity to have a group, even if they didn't have maybe a natural adult step in and say, hey, I'll do that. But to have someone that is championing the cause of, at each school. Because what we found is some schools had far more, you used the word robust, I'll stick with that, robust groups. And so having one person that is working with all five schools and the middle schools is helpful so that the same information is getting out, was another reason why we wanted.
So I think Mary would say.
Well, I'm a little bit confused by something Judy said. For groups proposed, and we have both, we have high school representatives, or, once I thought, produce it, is it both, or is it going to be, you know, or on location basis?
It could be both, either or not. It really, this is a decision that we need to make.
The other question, I'll read this. You know, the times I've been around each high school, selected their representative, and was it not even a different process for each school? And I have to say that it tends to be the student leaders and student government. But as a result, I got invited to a lot of student government meetings, which were always interesting, or we sent them in a morning. You know, I think that there's something to be said for that. I would be a little bit concerned with the board being overly directive about who would serve, who was served, let's turn my turn. I don't know, were you thinking that the board would somehow select, or who would really empower the coordinators in the affinity groups of each school?
Yeah, we were thinking more that the groups would decide who would come and speak. So I think naturally, we have students that will come, people speaking to public. But as long as they're meeting with their group and can kind of represent their group's thoughts, that would be the goal. So it wouldn't necessarily be the same student every time.
Thank you. Oh, I think, I think, I was wondering about middle school, and things have mentioned it. So middle school is included within our, involved?
Yeah, middle school is included in our plan, and not necessarily come and speak here. We didn't include the middle school, only because we have eight middle schools, and it's probably nine meetings in a year, if you have one a month. You have 12 more. One more, what is it, two times a month?
He said nine, we, I think he was doing it to them.
You're reading for that. So 18. We don't have middle schools. We didn't think of middle schools. That would be something that you guys could make a decision on. We really have tried to create something that ends up being a portion of your creation. It's really your purpose, your vibe, you need to hear students, and which students you feel like you need to hear, I think is part of that decision. What we'll do is use the affinity coordinators to help with how, because they'll be at each moment, be there to go. If you have prompts, things I really want to know about, want to hear from students, they will help facilitate. That's something that we couldn't have done in the past, because we didn't have people guiding this work.
Can you give an example of a prompt that they might have? Because you had like a number of good ones when we met.
Yeah, one thought could be, but could be a two, a three piece. Yeah, one one thought could be, but could be a two, a third piece of this, you know, it was a report that's going well at your school. And perhaps what's not going well and what solution we now to fix it. That might be, that would maybe to maybe just be feedback for fixing.
Martina's been waiting in the queue. Maybe you could hear from her question or comment?
Thank you. All really good questions. And I've been reflecting on the the questions that are at the top of this draft document you made for us about, you know, the purpose of the student voice and what we hope to gain and how we'll know if we've accomplished those goals. And one of the things that's just, I think, standing out to me, and maybe this is kind of getting at what I was trying to ask earlier as well, is I'm I'm what I'm seeing is is, or maybe what I'm not seeing is necessarily asking the question of, like, what is the purpose or the function for the students who are participating? And how will they know that they have accomplished their goals? How will we know that they are feeling satisfied? I think I'm just feeling a little uncomfortable with that. And and that's because I have really loved having the student participation over the last few years. It's been so missed. And it also was, it often wasn't very robust, just to use that same term again. Not because I think those students didn't want to be really full participants, but because the timing isn't very convenient for them, the structure isn't very inclusive of them. And I don't think that they always knew very well, like, how to enter or engage in the conversation. And I saw that particularly with the student board reps that we, you know, had who would have to, you know, leave in the middle to go finish their homework, which is completely understandable and I support them in doing that. And also, it just meant that we didn't really get very much, like, quote unquote, student voice. We got these, you know, reports at the beginning, but we weren't, for the most part, getting a ton of participation during. And that's what I would really value, the questions that they ask during discussions when they're there for that are so valuable because I don't think to ask the questions they ask. And so I guess I'm just a little curious about how we can push towards that. I really like these ideas and I really like the idea of making space for them to share with us. And I really like the idea of making space for including the affinity groups and making sure that they're, you know, sharing with us things that we need to know. And I also would just like, I would really want to make sure that anything we put into place, that we actually have a process for assessing whether or not it's meeting the students' needs and whether or not it's actually feeling like meaningful participation and not just like being a figurehead. Which I guess is more of a statement than a question. So I'm sorry. I feel like I don't really have a question mark at the end of that, but that's kind of the feeling that I'm having right now.
Yeah, you know, it was the same thing that we thought of, you know, if we're gonna, well, I don't want to get into your purpose. But it's the same thing that came to our minds. And one of the reasons why we put, you know, does the time work for students and adults? So those are the things that I think when you drill down using the tool, I do come up with a way to make this work that really gets you what you're looking for. I think students are, would be excited to come and happy their voice is heard. So create a stage or opportunities for that to happen that's meaningful to both adults and students. I think it's really one of the things that would get the students.
I'm gonna just make a comment in the role. But I would say for me, I mean, when you think about the purpose, I see it being definitely two-way. We're going to have things we're deliberating about or considering that I think would be really, really important and helpful to get student input on. So it would be things that we might ask or bring forward. But then I think there could be things that the students want to bring forward to us that we aren't aware of or not considering. So I I mean, that's very general, but I would say it be two ways, which would, in my mind, make it a little more authentic. And I'm grappling with the membership, the idea, because I think having broad, I think what we wanted is broader input. We didn't necessarily want to say we don't want student leadership or representation from schools, but we definitely want to hear from, you know, groups that we don't hear from that have different experiences. So, you know, I've asked several people in other districts, how, you know, not a lot of districts necessarily do this, but some. I've heard about like having a student advisory group that's broader. I don't know how many members, but they would meet at a, you know, and but they can, they would send representatives to every meeting. And we would be maybe suggesting topics we'd like to get their input from and vice versa. And representatives would then, from that group, chosen by the group, come and talk to us. But it's a way to get a little bit broader group or bigger group that, again, might address the time. And then we have some people present at the meeting, but, you know, and we could attend if that was appropriate. So that was just one thought about what I see as a purpose and a way to maybe get more, more, more voices. Laura, what's your hand?
Uh, yeah, I'm trying, I've tried several times. I know it was sent to us in a board packet. But the 2016 Equity Lens is what's online. And I have no access to the current Equity Lens except for what was in a passport packet I go and search. So, okay, but to have it when I need it and for other people to have it as a resource, if you're not. I know staff can get to it because they told me they can see it, but I can't. So is there a timeline for updating that on the website, so we get that out to the public?
I don't know who's in question. Uh, Carrie, correct. That was noted that it was pointing to a Google Doc that was restricted to staff only. And it's already been re-pointed to point where the PDF is on the district's website. So if you look again, you should be able to access that, but please let us know for some issue.
I'm on it right now. That's why I was asking the question, because that's trying to apply what we're talking about. And it says Board of Equity Decision Tool. That's the only link that I see. I'm on Equity Inclusion and Instruction page.
You can turn it on. That's on. Thanks for having us.
I, yeah, I just want to be able to get to it quickly and have access to it while we're using it all the time. Obviously, we're not if we can't get to it.
This is the district's 2016 Equity Decision Tool, a, 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 yes.
Right, it's not our framework.
So do you want to pass those out, maybe, that we can have them in our notebooks? That would be great.
At least they're in our board packet of thread.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Carrie, it was on the Equity Inclusion and Instruction page. So I think what happens is when you Google and it brings up a link to the old one. And so we'll have to figure out how to make the path.
In that case, it it can happen that when somebody has looked at a page before and they go back to a page on the web, the browser is looking at a cached version of the page. And once the cache is cleared, it should, it is there and it's working. Sorry.
So I will. I will email a link to the, to it, to the board, see how it electronically. Okay, at the top, it shows Larry Edginsale's pictures and then you scroll down and it's right on that page.
You guys feel it. And I'm really appreciative to have a copy here and we could put it in the notebooks because sometimes it's on my computer. So Alicia. All right, so not this particular, but I'll be a little linear here with y'all. Uh, this is our decision about what we want to do with the students. And we pass the equity tool that we, is the board we use. So if somebody talks about buying buses, we expect that they will use the equity tool on that. But this is our decision. So so when are we going to and how are we going to walk through this? After we make a decision, this is just our chance to practice. And I just want to be really clear that we, if we're going to make a decision next week and is this work session or is this work session? Also, just trying to figure out where and how we do it in order. And I know we're brand new at it, so this is our chance to kind of set our, our. Okay, now that we haven't used this equity tool very much, my thought is we would want to have a proposal that we'd be looking at and then walk it walk it through, or do we just generally think about student voice?
Walk it through as we make our decision. As I don't, yeah. Choose proposed idea.
Right, but I also heard additional that this was in addition to, I think we need to talk about the whole package of student participation. Is this the full, I mean, this is, this is a proposal to expand what we already have, correct? Because I under, I understood we already have reps coming from schools and this is in addition to it. So it's not the whole thing.
So you're saying to have a discussion about what it means to have student participation at the board each and every.
This year, yeah. I think we probably should focus on this year and as Maya pointed out, expand in its time code. So, yes. Maya, you're in the queue there.
So in terms of, and maybe I'm getting you wrong, Alicia, but you were, it seemed like you were in my head. Because I was like, why are we doing this? And I'm trying to embrace process. So would this require one of us at the end of this meeting to ask that it gets put out as an item for information so that we discuss it in a meeting and then do those three steps? And does that mean it's going to take three meetings to get to our decision? Which means that we're another month and a half away from having students come? Again, I'm not suggesting we don't do our process, but I am pointing out that the process as it stands would mean January before we have students?
Right, I think we want it sooner. And I thought, I mean, I think this work session we should probably use to the fullest. And then we could do front item for information or we could move into action if we felt ready after this work session, for sure, in our next meeting. So, but I don't know, I think we should probably clarify what we're proposing to do. And we could, at our meeting, then go through the Equity Lens if we don't finish that tonight.
Can I follow that up really quickly?
Sure.
So then would it be Mary Misaya who would take what we're suggesting and create a proposal for us to look through? Or are we taking this and creating the proposal ourselves? Or what what is, what is that one like?
So I was hoping that the board could tell us, do you want it like it used to be? There's one. Or two, do you want it like it used to be, but we give them a prompt? So that's the left side. You know, they would come in and sometimes share really great, wonderful things. And sometimes they'd say not much is happening, right? So they'll talk about things that were happening at their schools or not, if they didn't think anything was happening. But the second one on that left-hand side says, you're here and here's your prompt. And your prompt could be one of the things that Misale just said. What is going well at your school? And or what is something you'd like us to look at? Like, we hear a lot about bathrooms, right? Backrooms is one of the things that students tell us about. So we could rotate it, like the first meeting of the month, sorry, Laura, but and you could do what we used to do and the second one, we could give them a prompt, right? So we're just trying to figure out from this group, what, like, you want us to set it up like? We're asking you. And I think we think it's a good idea to give them a prompt if there's something you're curious about. So that would be what that can say. The right-hand side could be a work session. We're not, I, in my mind, I wasn't thinking you'd have thirty kids sitting up here with us, maybe they're bored. But in my mind, I was not thinking that. The other side is, we want the affinity groups to be able to share with you. And each affinity group will be different just because that's just the nature of a classroom. And we'd like to invite them in to share with us. Is that as a work session, is it at a board meeting? So we're looking for some direction from you because we've got what we think are really good ideas. But we don't know if you're interested. So that's the question we were bringing to you today. We can do whatever we tell us to do, make a proposal, but we do need to know.
And my question is, if we have tweaks to this, what's the next step? Who turns it into a proposal that we then have as formal consideration?
And we can do that if you went to.
Awesome. I'll take myself out of the queue and then add myself.
Right. Laura.
Um, so what I got from this is that we were going to have a discussion from what you said. And I I definitely heard you didn't say thirty kids up here. You said that they would rotate from different areas from the, of the city, the five.
Five, twenty.
Yeah. So I, we have a history of not hearing what is happening in our schools. And if we're, then listening from the the kids that are, you know, that have the most is great, but you don't hear a lot different. I really, really want to hear from affinity groups as the representatives from the schools. And I want it to switch out. And I think it's very, we're not here to, you know, make relationships with somebody all year. We're here to know what's going on at the schools, what the students are dealing with. I didn't hear from any adult or any staff or any teacher about the lack of ba, I want to say it correctly, um, bathrooms or that are not gender-specific, single bathroom. I I've heard that only from kids that when we had that meeting before I was elected. And it was blown away because everybody was giving me tons of way too much information. But we need to hear from the kids and what's missing. And that's what's important. That's why we're here.
Alicia. I'm gonna have my thing on. Sorry, hold on. Do you want to go again and say?
Yeah, I'll start over right now.
So I'm going to take a shot at this and you guys all hang in with me, okay? So I'm kind of hearing, and Martina will not be able to address your really good question. Because I think you you really proposed, you posed a very good question. So what if we say tonight, we don't make a decision, but we kind of send our our way forward, that we want to keep the status quo with our student reps from the high school, but we want to do a better job. So maybe our first, instead of indoctrinating even how the board works, we actually have an info session about what they need to, you know, to hear their, get their voices or or put together, I know we do, and and the board body is really a very part of trying to get people feeling comfortable up here, feeling like they understand and and how we do things and and get the voice. I still think we can work on that, Martina and everybody. I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to lose that. And we also use proposal number two because I think affinity groups, it it does empower you again in those groups. Like, you can speak to people who believe or power. And you can share your ideas and it gets it what you would say. So I want to figure out how we do that. And whether it's a prompt or, you know, it's like, here's what's on our agenda coming up. So I I think I'm kind of hitting the sense, getting a few nods. Let's move forward with Bo this year. Because, you know, we haven't heard student voice, we have to double up. So let's move forward with Bo. And what's, first thing we're going to ask them is, what time works for you? I mean, we may want to change when we need. There's some prompts and questions, and maybe a smoker from maybe at your Equity Key comes up with, where are those questions to get at? How do we get more authentic student voice? What do, what do we need? So if we kind of think that's how we're going to go, okay? So my next question is, this is really important, to figure out how we do the equity tool. This is our decision. So does our chair walk us through that tool? And I don't know, I really want to hear, this is what's important for me to hear from you guys. Does the chair or someone, you guys, you know, consult somebody, walk us through that tool as we're making the decision? So like tonight, before we leave, we actually walk through that tool during this work session? Or do we say, here's where we think we're going, now let's take a look at it with that lens? And maybe it's different for each one. So let's just talk about, what do you think for this? And I just want to make sure we do it.
So Alicia, thank you. But can I just, I just want to start to make sure we have a proposal and then let's talk about how we use the equity tool with it, okay? So I think what I heard you say is that we'll, that your suggestion, what you're hearing, is that we'll proceed with the traditional from every high school. We'll add prompted questions and we'll do this. We'll add prompted questions and we'll do this in our orientation, talk about what the meetings look like, et cetera. And we want to add a rotating representative from the affinity groups that you will help us bring to this meeting in the same way, right? For this year, was that your proposal?
That's, yeah, that.
I just wanted to be clear, okay? So let's talk about that first so we can be clear about where we're headed for it. And then we could talk about the equity tool so we could apply. Laura, Maya.
I, um, I'm in full support of having both categories of students joining us. I, um, I appreciate the, the idea of the prompt. I would personally support having it available to the students, but not requiring it because that's going to, um, guide the information that we receive in a way that's adult-centered. So I want to give them the chance and I think that this is a perfect opportunity for us to reimagine how we have our relationship with them for the ones that come up there, the one-on-one people. Um, and then put it in the hands and trust that affinity group lead. I assume it would be the onsite person versus the coordinator, right? The ones that are developing a strong relationship, so yeah. And having those folks, help them figure out, is there something that you want to bring to the table? And if there's not, then here are some things that you can consider. So that's, that's my twist on the prompts, just having them offered, but not required. Now each of you tell us what you think about the back. Just to make.
So do we have some general agreement that for this year, that we would ask you maybe to write that up for us? Or you?
Martina.
Martina. Just a second, sorry, Martina, go.
No problem. Um, well, I'm, I'm definitely in support of the both and version of this, especially as, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out like what this even looks like moving forward. Um, one thing that I would really love to see in, uh, as, as y'all are writing up a proposal for what this would look like functionally, um, I'd love for y'all to consider where we're going to put students. I think it would be really contrary to the purpose for us to have them sit in the audience or sit below us. I don't like sitting above and right now I'm like, what, like a Wizard of Oz, like up on the screen? It's terrible to be above everyone in that way. Um, so I just have feelings about that and I'm not sure how to work around it. Um, the other thing I would love to see in a proposal is some form of like a pre and post assessment. Maybe the pre less important, but the post really important for understanding, like, how do they feel after having participated? Not even necessarily like just one meeting, but like after the year, um, if we're trying to evaluate whether this is functional moving forward, I would really like to give them a space to, to, to share with us how they felt about their participation anonymously. So that they can really feel uninhibited to, to be honest about what the experience was like, maybe what they would change, you know, what they were satisfied with, what they weren't. Um, and if it's at all possible to poll or survey or do some communication with previous board reps and get, you know, maybe some anonymous suggestions from them or some anonymous feedback from them. I think that would also be really invaluable, just to sort of learn from what we've done in the past and continue to, you know, work towards something even better.
Great. So, um, and that would all be part of our orientation. I mean, I think we'll, we want this fleshed out, so there's a conversation about, I think it's less prompts, but more of the kind of information we're looking for. And obviously what their ideas about our information they want to share with the board, things they'd like to see differently. So it is a bit, it's two-way and not this is what we want to come and share only about this. So I think that's what I'm hearing, we definitely want a two-way channel of communication.
Okay. I would love, um, for you all, when you're talking to the affinity coordinators, to maybe think about how to bring in those middle school voices. I know, um, my son came and spoke to the board voluntarily a few years ago when he was a sixth grader, I want to say. And he, he's now an eleventh grader and still talks about it as a very impactful moment on his development as like a person who pictures himself in the world beyond K-12. And, and they have, they have some really pointed things to talk about that don't necessarily come in from the high school perspective. I know that complicates it, but I just want it to be maybe considered and thrown around. If it comes up like we don't want, there's other students saying, we want to bring this forward. And I'd love to have that be available to them.
Just add one of the thoughts to that. You might, as a resource, want to reach out to, in Portland, there is a, you might already know about it, a student group that's led by students that do leadership training. They might have some really good materials and suggestions to offer in this as well, so that'd be great. So we're ready for the equity lens conversation? Uh, Mary.
See, I, the mayor also has a youth advisor group, maybe you can coordinate them.
Can you share a concern? I'm just being transparent. It feels like everything kind of came out of us to do and it's our best decision. We're still not going to make a decision we can take. We put together student after student, but work is still, we can't really do that if we don't know exactly what you want with it. So, so putting a proposal together for a conversation that you guys are going to have, it's going to be pretty challenging to take that, the, the conversation. And so the, we wanted it to happen sooner than later. That would mean the quicker your conversation happens, the faster we need a report from one of you down to us. Then we put something together that captures what you're, what you're thinking. It's amount of that one student.
I was going to say thank you because that is the crux of a lot of the issues that a lot counts. Whose decision is it and what, what point do we rely on staff, which is the equity tool? We make it, you know, we're going to step up and go through that process. I appreciate your last being transparent. Uh, Alicia and then Laura.
Oh, did you want to weigh in?
Did you?
So I see that we're, we can't make a decision here today, but that is kind of like a nod. So I haven't heard you guys say you kind of agree. Um, but right now I've heard four, three, yeah, four of us say, you know, this is kind of working. So we'll make that decision. And, um, and then I think as we flesh it out, I would actually ask the chair, like is, given that it's that part of the equity, does that fall to the, the two board members who are on the equity committee? To kind of pull something together and bring it back to the board and look at? Um, of course, we'll check in with you, you both, but I kind of see that's, so that, that hasn't happened yet, but I can see that needs to happen. Because there's a lot of good ideas flowing around it. And how do we really get more of an authentic voice? And how do you do the, the pre, the pre eval and post? So I, I want you to know that's part of it. If this is kind of the nod, is the next step for us as a board? Because we have to do the work, it's our decision, we get to do the equity tool work as well. And, and so that's, I'm kind of there, like, should, should we be using it now? Um, because I'd rather do it now than wait for us during the meeting. But again, this is our first try, so we should be very thoughtful. I don't know if that answers or just confuses Laura.
Laura.
Um, I think the equity tool comes before we make a decision on what we're choosing or have a nod or, or whatever. We have to look at this and see, you know, what's the purpose of the student's voice and use our, our tool. And then that will help us get to that position. It'll, it'll, it will be, it's, those are very helpful to them in that regard.
Yes, soundable, okay.
Okay. I think then for our, our next board meeting, we will write up what we think, the proposal that we talked about tonight. So people see it in writing and we'll use, I might ask, I think, thank you for your suggestion, Alicia, maybe Alicia and Maya, or to the staff.
So we actually are, we, I two don't have agreement, so can I, can I start that again?
We don't have agreement?
No, because I think this is a very good, and it's not that we're disagreeing, we just need to have the conversation. Um, does the equity tool come before I say, hey, here are two proposals, let's bring them together? Is, and, and what I'm hearing Laurel say is, it comes before that. And it actually helps us decide whether we, we put both proposals forward. Um, I, but the other way, I said, let's put both proposals forward and then put the equity lens over it. But again, this is our chance to really delve, delve in and see what makes most sense. This is our first time using a tool. So I'm, I'm up for either, I'm not very, either one. I just want to be very thoughtful and have the conversation. So I'm sorry for stopping you, I just didn't leave what I have, but it's a good question, we need to address it.
Well, I'm also then confused. So are we saying that just in the general topic of student voice, we will do an equity lens process? I mean, is that what we're saying?
Laurel's got her answer.
Laura.
Maya, I have a.
You can, you can continue your.
Using what they put together with the, I'd assume the questions are at the top for a reason. So they applied to both. We use the equity lens to decide what we're going to do. And they can't do that for us.
Okay?
Hi. I, um, I was hearing, I'm not sure which one of you, I apologize, mentioned that you drew these questions from the equity lens, particularly focused on this topic. I agree with Laurel that before we say, yes, let's do both and move on, that we should just look at these questions and, um, and possibly include who's left out, which I think you already jumped on. Uh, we've already identified one group of students. And then from there, I would, I would suggest, as did Alicia, I believe, that Alicia and I can put together something. And we actually meet with you on Monday and if we can do that before Monday, Alicia, I will not sit behind your shoulders. Can do the preliminary work in the chair, yeah. And perhaps we can get your expert feedback on what we, how we tweak this based on the conversations we'll have. And if that's agree upon, I would love to get the file so that I can just edit it instead of reproducing. I would be.
And then you will share that in our next board meeting?
Yes, so that we will have a chance. We won't have to make another separate meeting with you all, not that it's not lovely. But I'm, I'm hearing Larry say this and I'm also picturing the meeting we had where there was a file that he shared with us, that if it was printed out, it would be like, you know, ten people arms to arms. And, um, you have work that you need to do. And this is work that we can do. So that's, that's part of maybe what I'm hearing is like, like this isn't your work, this is our work.
Yeah, to me for it to go the way you want, it can't come back for us. And, and like you guys are right on, you're, you're right on the precipice of doing something perfectly the way it should run. So I think making sure that you cover it with tool before you make a decision. You, everybody should have come in with their ideas of what they'd like and express those. And now it's time to put it to the test by using the tool. Once, once you've gone through it, you may come up with exactly what you want to do.
Okay. Um, I would say, Laura.
I just want to encourage everybody to look at this and go through the tool. But we don't all have to bring everything we're saying, thinking and writing down forward. But it's a great practice, this is a great chance for us to start getting them a practice.
Can I add one more thing? It's even best if you do it for yourself and then bring it to the group. Do the whole thing as a group because then you can kind of move in your direction. So have your own thoughts. And that's what's easy.
Well, I, um, so I think that's a great suggestion that instead of just having you two do it, that we should have everyone do it and grain that and then talk it through at the meeting. Yes.
So this is great, we're learning a lot. I, um, it's very helpful, I agree with Laurel that we should go through this first. Was just talking it out helps, like, so, okay, let's see if these are the best. I, we'll see. So let me see if I have this. So what I heard versus us having someone walk us through this as a group, that we're going to take a look at what's on, what we're going to make a decision on, which is student voice. Will each use our equity tool, go through it and be prepared for a discussion, like, and a decision at our next board meeting? Okay?
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, I'm thinking I might add one more step to the, I'm going to think that through. I, I really, I did not really understand. I didn't know, I thought you were presenting what you were doing tonight. I didn't realize we should be leading a conversation about using this tool. So, um, I guess as Alicia said, we got there.
Wasn't we even that painful?
So, um, we will write those instructions up to someone to clear, okay?
Maya and I will probably take notes and hold the notes that we heard today just so we're prepared, um, next time writing. Because a lot of good stuff was said and we just want to, I don't want to lose it.
Yeah, I would love to edit this document, maybe in like red, like a color coordinated type of person. So that we see what we added to it or shifted. So then when we come back at the meeting for the discussion and we use it, we don't have to re-access this conversation individually.
Can I just, that's where I'm getting confused. I'm seeing, I'm thinking we're doing the equity lens on the general question of student voice. The, I'm going to sidetrack, these are proposals, we might come up with a completely different proposal. So these were examples, I'm assuming? I think we are just answering the equity questions about the general question of student voice. That's what I heard, you know, what we want out of that. And, and so it's really not about these proposals.
Well, and Laurel just said something super important. For the purpose, it should say, what is the purpose of the student's voice to the board? So, um, I mean, that's what we meant, but we did not put it in there, so. That's, that's a good.
So then when you get down to the inclusion, you. Oh man, sorry, you still work second, why did you jump in?
Alicia.
I know, I was just, it feels weird, it feels wrong. Um, inclusion, how are you intentionally engaging multiple perspectives in the decision or in the discussion? So those are kind of good questions. I probably will be looking at these and running through my head with the equity tool because I'm not creative enough to. But I appreciate other people, it's not set in stone, these aren't the only options, we give you other options. That correct?
Laura.
Yeah, I, I think what I, and please tell me if I'm wrong, I got students' voice to the board to have a discussion about that using the equity lens. And there was prompts at the top, but then there's ideas, just proposed ideas for, that directions we can go with this. And so it doesn't mean you're going to, oh, we have to pick that box or we have to pick that box. So, um, that, I think these are just helpful, helpful guides for us of, in the boxes and the top is really going to help me. And this is actually great just for helping to really realize how the, how, it's going to be a little bit painful at first to use the equity lens. But it's, it's, you're going to find in the long run, it's going to make decisions making a lot easier.
Yes, but I would also add that, and so what Maya was saying, I think if we, we had some additional ideas that came up tonight combined.
Yeah.
But I think our big job is to figure out what we each want out of the student voice as a board.
What?
Through the equity lens, what's missing, what we can have with. Okay, I'm going to say that unless anyone has something pressing, thank you for your time and effort and thoughts on this very much, three of you. And I'm going to adjourn.
And I'm going to adjourn the work session and we'll be back at 7:00 P.M.